We're at that fork in the road we've talked about probably for a few years where we gotta kinda make a decision what direction we wanna go with our aquatic park. So, I have a little presentation in the presentation. I got kinda three scenarios that I'd like to show council and I'll tell you, I'll ask what, well, I'll tell you what I'm looking for as a staff point of view and that's just a direction on, you know, are we going to maintain what we have and just make repairs? Do we grow the footprint that we currently have or do we seek private vendors to come in? You know, we just gotta figure out what direction we're gonna go and this way task can, staff can take that information and then we can move in that direction now. During this, you'll probably, you'll hear my personal views on what I think we can do as staff with the blessing of the council, but again, but I wanna lay it in your lap to make those decisions for us. So, so we'll go in, but before we get started, I actually wanna hand you some things just to kinda paint the picture. So, this right here is last year at the season, we took a survey and so I'll hand this to you guys to thumb through, but these are surveys that were taken by citizens visiting the park because we were asking some specific questions from them. And then those questions were, do they wanna see us grow the park, change certain things about the park? And then I believe in that packet, there should be some handouts also.
Is this one for each?
Should look like this right here.
The one for everybody?
Yes.
This one for, okay. And the rest of this is just...
The rest are the actual surveys. But if you look at this cover sheet, this is just kind of a brief snapshot of what some of these are saying and you'll see that those packets are broken into St. Mary's, Kingsland, Woodbine, because we asked the residents when they did the surveys to say what city they're from and you can, you can see we actually get a pretty good majority from our local county area. But then there are certain suggestions, obviously people want new pools, they want more slides, inflatables, they would like volleyball courts are mentioned in there. Some of the complaints in the survey, longer hours, maybe a solution would be to open earlier a couple of days a week. Some of the others were maintenance and repairs, cleanliness, cleanliness, safety concerns, they prefer a longer season, safety concerns, more food options, more funding, music, more steps to the pool, more shading, better parking, handicap parking, and then night swims for adults were, those were the top suggestions in the packet. But I wanna let you guys have that to look through, but those, we did that over a course of a week and that's, that's how many we got. Anyway, but it was eye-opening to some things, obviously asking if it should be publicly funded and getting information from citizens of Woodbine and Kingsland probably doesn't have the same effect as if you read the packets from St. Mary's. All right, and then I'll go ahead and move into the presentation. So, these are just some ideas as we start down this path. I just asked that you rent these ideas, not buy them yet, because this is just the first of probably many conversations as we kinda develop this picture on what direction we wanna go. But these are, again, suggestions on when we get to growing the park, these are my thoughts if we're gonna grow it, but I am very open to other ideas, not just from council, but even from the public to see what we can do to make that a better park. All right. So, in today's discussion, we're gonna, I'd like to introduce the new aquatics park supervisors, if they wanna step up here real quick. This is Isabella Young, she's our park supervisor. Actually, I'll let her give a little snippet of herself and then her assistant, Laura Nelson. Go ahead.
Good evening. Again, my name is Bella. I am coming all the way from Tennessee, so it's definitely out of state, very far away. I've been lifeguarding for about five years now, been lifeguard instructing, teaching lifeguard classes for about three, been involved in teaching swim lessons for the last two years. I did just graduate from Middle Tennessee State University with a bachelor's in leisure and sports management, so this job kinda fell in my lap. This is exactly what I wanna do for quite a while right now, so I'm really happy, really happy to be here.
Good.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Say hi.
Hi. So, just like Bella, I come from very far away. Last, a few months ago, I moved from Minnesota, so that's very exciting, but unlike Bella, I focus less on the pool stuff and more on the administrative and safety side of things. So, I've worked a lot with community services and domestic violence as well as helping run a couple of businesses and stretching how far they can prop it in a time. So, a little bit of difference, but a good team.
Yep, thank you. So, anyway, I wanted to introduce them because I wanted to show you the direction we're going this year. So, you know, in the last few years, we've had a manager that was in-house, kinda homegrown, reaching out, like I said, Isabella's experience, this is what she went to school for, was water sports essentially, and so getting her in here with her experience, she's already training lifeguards and such, I feel like is really gonna benefit. So, when we were interviewing for that position, we really kinda honed into those skills and then her assistant carried the other half of it, which she comes from the business side of it, she understands P and L, she understands budgets, and already they've been here probably a little more than a month, I would say, and they've already inundated my, you know, my emails with ideas, thoughts, and the first thing they actually said this morning, we had a meeting, and it was, we're wasting, we're losing a lot of money in this as they sat down and kinda took a snapshot of the business and that's honestly exciting to hear two people say that, that are in the middle of that right now. They're, they're looking at it and they see a gem, they think we can actually turn the curve and make money in that park instead of lose money. So, once we get certain things in order. The other topics we're gonna talk about are the three, maintaining the current footprint with the capital improvement plan, leasing the property to a private company or selling it, or expanding the plan to increase guest counts and revenue, how we can grow revenue. So, as we, skip ahead, so maintaining the current footprint, as you can see this, so this is our kiddie splash pad area. The kiddie area is a fun play area with equipment, with a large tower bucket, soaks the kids about every five minutes if you've not been in the park. Families enjoy this attraction and offers wonderful environment for families and young children. So, that's kind of our kiddie area. So, the current state of the St. Mary's Aquatic Park includes a variety of amenities to include this one. This is one of three major attractions and as you kinda break down into it, yearly necessary expenses include, we have to replace furniture every year, paint, equipment, replacements of the umbrellas and other items for shading and tables and things. We just recently replaced all the landing pads for this feature and we're working to get the current attraction repainted this year. Replastering is the major maintenance component that we need to get done, we're, that's, that's in our capital improvement plan, we're looking to do that next year. So, we can, other areas where we can make revenue for this certain part of the project would be to increase more cabanas, maybe some family styles since this is kinda the kid section, and in those, we would offer power, so there'd be fans in there, furniture, place where people can plug in their cell phones, and if we really wanna push the envelope, even a small, like refrigerator, maybe even TVs one day, but obviously we can increase the prices, the more amenities that we would offer in that. Looking ahead to the lazy river, so the lazy river's a great way to relax and flirt along with the, with the current. This is the most popular attraction that we have in the park and it's enjoyed by all citizens. The attraction is currently limping with the torn liner, you all are aware of that. We did get one bid in just recently this week, which I'm going through it and reading the details right now, but that'll probably be on the next council session, depending on what other avenues I'm gonna look at. And as of that, right now, they're looking at a $217,000 repair and that would to take the liner out and replaster it and bring it back to its original, original view. We could bedazzle it a little bit, make it a little fancier, and that would cost us 324,000 if we wanted to put some fancy tiles on it.
What's the warranty on that first quote?
That's, you're looking at replastering, you're looking at about a three-year warranty on certain things, but that's just to bring the concrete back to where it's not leaking. We're currently losing a ton of, besides the hole in the liner, the concrete itself is leaking water when water gets into that, so it needs to be fresh concrete and plaster on it.
So, they're gonna do the concrete and plaster prior?
All the repairs for that, for that amount.
That's in the 2,000, I mean 217,000.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that'll bring it back to just a basic but working pool.
But it's only a three-year warranty?
Yes, sir. Now, there'll be other warranties, like I said, if you wanna upgrade it and put the special tiles and things like that.
How long since the last time it's had a complete overhaul like that?
It's never had a complete overhaul, they put liner over it the last time it started leaking and that was probably 10 years ago.
The concrete's never been addressed and this liner lasted 10 years and the concrete's never been addressed.
Correct, and that is the general life of that liner.
And how long has the Aquatic Center been open?
We're hitting our 25-year anniversary coming up.
Refresh.
Oh, sorry, going back to that. So, some upgrades I just wanna throw in there that we could, if, this is if we maintain the park, we could run power to the island, again, for the current cabanas that we have out there, we can put power plugs, fans, things like that, it makes it a lot better amenity, we can charge appropriately for that and a lot, right now, it's, it's a great place to hang out with your family, but it's still hot. The park gets very hot during the summer, so adding the fans and the ability to put refrigerations and things like that, that would make it worth the buy. We can, we can definitely make some more money throughout the season. But we'd like to put, if we do put power out there, we have Kona Ice currently out there, it's a big attraction, kids love it, we'd probably put that over in the island so that we can build more family cabanas in that family area. If you look at our Orange Crush Pool Slide Lap Pool, so this, Aquatic Center boasts a variety of amenities that cater to visitors, this used to be one of them, when we would get, we, when I first came in here, we were having swim lessons and we were having a swim team practice there. For safety reasons, we had to pull the plug on that though, and a lot of it was, you know, they need a heated pool during the winter time and there was some efforts being made to try to heat the water, but it just wasn't appropriate and I didn't feel it was safe for the city to, to do that, so we pulled that. And that was, the swim team itself was trying to come up with a way to heat the water, so when we made that decision, they moved on, which is fine. So, there are things we can do in the future though, that can bring that kind of activity back and that would be to install a professional commercial heater in the water. We obviously wanna replace the, I think there are lap rings that divide the track, the lane dividers, and then we also need to replaster this pool so that we can extend the life on it. So, if you look at the pool now, it looks a little dingy and stuff on the side, you can see the deterioration of the concrete and such, and that's just because it's way overdue for, for its plastering, so that's also in line with our capital projects.
Did you already say the last time it had been redone or whatever plastered?
For the lazy river, it hasn't. This, I do believe at some point, probably about 10 to 12 years ago, I think this did get some form of light plastering, I think they patched it, is what they did.
So, so with what we're gonna do in the future, it should last more than 10 years?
Yeah, when we replaster this, it should go, if you take care of this pool and plaster it and the proper maintenance, this, this pool's gonna last a really long time.
They're only gonna give you a three-year warranty, but I mean if it lasts...
For the lazy river, yes, sir, for the lazy river. But the plastering itself, I mean, as long as you don't drain it, you don't let the sunlight soak into the concrete and stuff like that, it has to have water in it, there's things that will extend certain warranties on that. Looking at the Orange Crush, that is our, the slide attraction, so sliding down the tube and landing in the pool's landing area, the stairs do need to be replaced on this. We're gonna get one more season out of it, this is our last season. We were gonna try to have those replaced this year, we did get zero bids, but we did have the, an engineer look at the structure and the pillars itself, he says you should be able to get another five years, but the staircase, this would be the last season after that, it would need to be replaced. So, we're gonna go ahead and you'll see some suggestions I have for this, for this attraction, and we're gonna paint it, clean it, make it look as nice as we can, but we're gonna push this one more season and that'll help us kinda push that, push this through while we do some other maintenance stuff like the lazy river needs our attention right now.
Do we know, because we had no bids, we don't know what that would cost to replace those stairs?
Yes, sir, I'm gonna go over that in here in a minute because we do have, this was developed by a company called Whitewater out of Canada, and so I did reach out to them through our supervisors and we've had a few meetings to see what it would look like to keep the same traction, but to update it and today's safety, you know, things. And I actually wanted to see what it would look like to put a second slide on it, to have two slides coming off of one platform, and so they gave me quotes for all that and I'm gonna go over that with y'all. So, if you look at this, rolling right into it, this is, if they repair just the stairs and structure, you can see the gray, that would be the base and stairs, this would be the first thing, this would have the exact same footprint. The benefit to just replacing this is if you can see the little color stripes on the tubes, so we have a dark out tube, when you go down, it is completely black. Well, now, in today's slides, the big thing is having the lights that streak by you when you're going down the tube, and so they would put those in there with that package, and so that would update it and make it a little bit more fun for new kids coming through there. If we did alternate, the alternate one would be to upgrade the entire thing, including the slide, and then this is what I would push for, if we're gonna spend the money anyway, this would extend the platform, it's the same footprint, and we would have the enclosed slide with the lasers on it so that you can, you know, when you're going down the tube and we get to choose what colors and what that pattern looks like, but then you have an open slide also, so there are kids that won't go down there because they don't wanna be in a dark tube and this would be an open concept, it gives us basically another attraction on the same platform. So, this would be the, the direction I would lean on only because it's a little bit more expensive, but in the full picture, we're getting a complete another attraction. So, if you look at the breakdown in cost, on the bottom, you look at the base, go all the way down, to change out the base and stairs, we're looking at $221,000 under today, if we did it today. If you did the alternate one, which is the slide also, because the slide does need certain patches and repairs, right now, the slide's in good shape, it just needs to be, there's a few patches that need to be made and then it needs to be reglofed, that would be $363. To repair, to replace the whole thing, extend it and add an additional slide, you're looking at 489,000. But again, that would bring in a complete new attraction as well, so we would have two slides operating in the same pool. All right.
Charlie?
Yes, sir.
One of the questions, and I know this goes back to the kiddie pool area as well, some of the plastic components, the slides themselves, you know, show some fade and wear, you know, from UV.
Yes, sir.
Are, is it recommended thing just to paint those or is there some other way of treating those to restore the vibrant, vibrance of the color?
So, really, it comes down to its painting. So, when you get certain areas that get rust and things, obviously it has to be treated and we fix that. There is some moving parts that have to be replaced, we've replaced the bridge, we did two sections last year because they cracked. If anybody went to the park last season, remember there was cones in place and we had some, we had to block off some of the kiddie area, and that's because the bridge was soft and we didn't wanna child to crack or hurt their, you know, cut their foot on it. So, we blocked it off, but now we went ahead and replaced all that, we put new crash pads, and so now the thing to do is, what we've done in the past is, it comes apart in sections, especially the, the big flat pieces where you'll see some of the decorative, and we usually have the high school art department will paint those for us, so we're doing that again this year where we're taking it off and we're getting them painted. And then the actual poles that you can't remove, you just have to be careful, you know, we don't wanna drain the whole thing, one, it's, it's not cost-effective to do it, but we don't want paint getting in the water either, so we have to kick a professional company to come out and paint that and stuff, it's not something we can just do on our own. So, but there are things we can do to enhance it, make it look better, yes, we can paint it.
Like I said, the, the actual kinda plastic slides, those are painted?
No, 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 just the aluminum and the fiberglass.
Right, but you know, some of that actual plastic slide is what I'm saying, is faded and, and, you know, doesn't have the vibrant color that it used to have. Are there any treatments for that, to kinda restore some of that?
I would look into that, but offhand, I do not know, to be honest, I don't. But I can look into that.
Put an epoxy resin coating on it.
Yeah. All right. The option two of the park would be to lease the property or sell it, in doing so, what that would look like for the city, and again, these are just snapshots, obviously this would be a big rabbit hole to go down, but some of the options, if we were to do this, would be to long-term lease, you know, what that would be best for, if that was a decision we went, would be maintaining ownership while transferring daily operations and financial responsibility, but depending on the deal that's made is how much of that is, are we still gonna be responsible for repairs and things? You know, we may save money in the labor side of things, but we're gonna lose the revenue because another company's making that money every year, so you gotta really kinda look at how that's gonna play out. But the city would retain ownership under this one, private company or nonprofit leased the facility for fixed term, typically five to 25 years is what I put on here, maintenance and repair responsibilities, capital improvement requirements, revenue sharing, things like that. The advantages for this would be the city keeps its assets while reducing operational burdens, the challenges require legal review and possible public bidding under Georgia law, and the risk of private operators, you know, making profit a priority over the community assets. Obviously, if we have control of it, we have a better say in what's happening in that park. Option two would be a public-private partnership, so that would be best for retaining, again, city ownership with a strategic control, but outsourcing the professional management. This is probably the least favorite of all of the options, only because, like I said, where we are now is strategically, we, we brought in some new staff that actually have a little bit of a background and a focus on what we're doing with the park, and so bringing in another company just to run the park for us when we're already doing that, I don't know if that would necessarily be cost-effective. The advantages though, keeps, keeps ownership and policy control, we get to determine the hour standards, the challenges, city remains financially responsible for capital maintenance, so we're kinda in the same boat when it comes to repairs. Requires close oversight and assures community standards and safety compliance. Option three, if we just outright sold the property, obviously this would be best if the city wishes to completely divest from the ownership, the city declares the property's surplus under state law for the sale of public property, the property is appraised and sold through public bid or RFP or through the JDA. Buyer assumes full ownership, takes over, the city's advantages would, it removes all liability from the city, all, all control, generates a one-time revenue from the sale, simplifies long-term budgeting of resources. Here's the, so challenges, loss of public control, private owners could repurpose or close the facility. So, again, not sure, these are just options, but if we did, then whoever buys that has full control over what that park becomes or it happens, if they end up running it for three years and they're not making any profit, they can absolutely try to sell it, it could be, you know, empty, so we gotta just think that's possibilities, you know, or it can turn around and be tightly run and, and just be a great staple too, so we just don't know.
Is there a way to make a sale contingent on keeping it a water park?
I believe there is, but...
So, that way, whether they buy, obviously they would keep it, but they can't sell to somebody because it would have that clause in it?
Yeah, but I tell you, my, and I think you can, but my only concern with that, to be honest, just to put it out there, is you look at a lot of businesses that start in St. Mary's, if they are not making a profit and they end up closing, and we may end up with an empty water park for the next two or three years, just sitting out there, you know what I mean, like same with like our old pool, you know, once we closed that pool that sat there for a while, so that would be my worry, that we're struggling as a city to keep that, you know, keep it afloat necessarily without the help of tax, you know, taxpayers putting money towards it, so can it make profit? Absolutely it can, but there's just a lot of upfront costs that need to, need to happen to make it profitable, so, and then obviously they would increase, they would have to increase the ticket prices a lot more than what the city wants to do, so that's just things we'd have to look at. And then there's a hybrid model that, you know, where it's a lease to own, you know, and that's, that could be more for what you're going through where, you know, they get a run for two or three years than to buy it, then they're not making a profit, the city can inherit again, but then we would inherit kinda the same way possibly that we got it from PSA, it could have some broken things that they didn't have the money to fix and, and we're starting over again. So, anyway, that, just wanted to run through, those were those options, and then there's option three, the expansion. Now, if we expand the park, again, this is, these are Charlie thoughts, these aren't necessarily what we would do, these are just my thoughts on how we can grow the park and make it, make it carry itself to bring more revenue year-round and not just three months. So, I didn't make a rendering, this is the, this is the, if you've been to my office, this is what I got hanging on the wall. So, if you look, I can't do the pointer on this, but if you can see the park, you see the circle where you, you come in up on the top, what I would pose is if we move the, if we grew the park, we can move the baseball fields to the, to the other park on Margaret Street. If we do that, that allows us to put a parking lot that's needed in that park, so right now, they're, the parking's horrible. So, if we put a nice parking lot right there, if you look at that blue, here, I can show you, might be easier if I just stand right here and show you, if you look at this blue area right here, what I would propose is a new entrance to the, to the water park, and this first section right here could actually be utilized if we put appropriate things in there year-round. So, there is a company I looked at that offers, they make heated lagoons for roughly the price of a commercial pool, you can put in a beach-themed lagoon where the water's not very deep, but you can, it can be heated, you could still do basic swim lessons with children, and it also offers beach feel, you put some palm trees up there and it feels like you're going to the beach. It's a complete, you'd look at a lot of these new developments like in Florida where the Jimmy Buffett houses and things are, it's the same kinda concept, so it feels like you're at the beach. You can even get the pool that makes the waves if you wanted, like light waves and stuff like that, it's actually really nice. I would also propose putting volleyball in there, pavilions for birthday parties, snacks, maybe a small arcade, and then other things we can do would be like mini golf. That stuff would allow us to be open to the kids on the weekends, we can have birthday parties there, and that would also allow us to even keep a few lifeguards year-round instead of having them seasonal, and that brings, honestly, it brings some professionals in there that can maintain the park year-round, and that, that would help us in the long run with a lot of things. If you look...
Do you think having adequate crews could be a problem?
Not if we were, if we were year-round and we can provide hours for them, I don't think so. I think a lot of our staff, if you come in there during the summer, those kids absolutely love that park, the problem is, is they go back to school and the park shuts down, so I think having a full-time crew would take care of some challenges, obviously the other challenges, we would have to really advertise and push to get people in our doors to make sure that we're, we're getting some kinda revenue through there. If you look on the second, I would consider this the young adult or teenage area, obviously the additions of some slides, some other attractions, and obviously we would price out and find, there's deals out there where there's other parks that are moving slides and things, there's stuff we can get, then there's brand-new attractions we can put. Obviously, nothing is gonna be cheap, you know, it's, it would be an investment if we grew the park, but this would bring other attractions that would allow us to raise our ticket prices because we're offering real aquatic park experiences, not, not necessarily a small municipal, but this would actually be a water park. The other thing would be a, in the bottom corner, you can't see it between the two gates, is a food court, an actual sit-down area where you can come in, order food, and you could have inside-outside seating, you can think of, if you can visual, like the garage door's picking up and like an open area, so that we can actually have a kitchen, serve food, sell food, and not just concession, we can actually do sandwiches and things like that. So, if a family's there for all day, they can come in and get fries, burgers and all that. The notion of putting it between the gate is the bigger section would be open during the summer when the aquatic parks open, but we could still operate the smaller section of the food court for birthday parties or just weekend events. Then you got the other attractions, and then when you walk into the current aquatic park, that would really be your kid focus, and then we have some other kid stuff that we would do, but that whole park would basically be designed more for the family experience for kids and little kids and stuff like that. So, that would kinda give us the whole overall picture of growing the park, but the, having a little golf cart or a little golf course, volleyball, and that lagoon, we can operate that year-round, so that would bring in revenue, we can have ticket sales and year-round passes and stuff that would allow people to go in there during the weekends.
What would be the comps of like something that has this caliber of a park of admission, like Summer Waves or...
It'd be equivalent to Summer Waves, for us, it would be.
And what are they charging for admission?
So, they actually have a pretty good annual pass, but that's, so I've talked to the general manager up there, they run a pretty cheap annual pass, but that's because you have to pay $10 a day to go on the park, to get on the island, so they're under the Jekyll Island authority and all that money goes into one pot anyway, and that's how they, that's how they offset that cost to make it feel like a better deal, but you still have to pay 10 bucks, you know, every time you go out there. I wanna say they're right at $80 first season pass, but their daily rates, I wanna say are more like 20, 25, depending on what packages you get.
What's our annual pass?
$75.
They're $5 more for their annual pass?
Yeah, but it's $10 a day to go on the island, this is, that's how they're able to offer it cheaper.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause they're, 'cause that revenue's going into the same, it's going into their general funds. So, some of the other things, whether it's we grow the park or we maintain, is shading, I think shading is a, definitely a must, you know, even when we're looking at our current... I think shading is a, definitely a must, you know, even when we're looking at our current ticket prices, and there is some strong arguments to raise those prices in some areas, and it's not necessarily just the general admission, but to raise some of the birthday parties, some of the after-parties we do, there are ways to bring in more revenue, but if we were to offer shading, obviously, create a better environment, it's a much better argument for us to raise the prices. Right now, that park, in the middle of July, there's not a whole lot of, you know, places to run to when it's really hot, and that's, that's probably the biggest issue in the park. Food court, obviously, you know, we have a small concession window now, a food court would enhance the experience, it would allow families to actually get food at the park, and this is a, kind of a, a big issue for the park, too, you know, we can do small concessions, but we're not supplying any meals out there, so that would help us, if you're going to get somebody that wants to spend all day there, rent a cabana, you know, we really need a way to provide food for them. New slides, obviously, would help any attractions, so you saw the, we brought up the second one, and then there's some other parts in the park where we can offer, you know, small attractions and get creative, but shading, making it look colorful, making it look really vibrant out there. Today, we just talked about maybe, you know, the additions of lights, we can expand, expand our hours for some of the events, have some night swimming for adults, things like that, so. We are looking at some other options that would help us if we hold what we got, just making it better, and then we can, because once all these attractions are actually fixed, and we have a good idea of what direction we're going, I do believe in the next, I would honestly say in the next three years, we could get to a point where, we can't do it tomorrow, but we can get to a point where the park really is breaking even and kind of holding its own. The problem is, is we get a lot of momentum, but then a major attraction shuts down, we only got three. So when one's broken, we have to spend a lot of money to fix it, but honestly, after a couple more years, the whole park's pretty much been flipped, so once we get all the plastering and everything done. Some year-round attractions, again, just the golf, we can do volleyball courts now, we have the space out there for it, so that's something we do. This is, was my concept when I talked about the heated pool, so when I looked at some options for a lagoon, there's actually a lagoon that can be, it's a quarter of an acre, it doesn't have to be this big, this is just a picture, but you can see that it's at an aquatic park, but a quarter of an acre water source, and then we can build the beach and the chairs and all that, is actually pretty doable, so. Again, I think that would be a great way to say, hey, not only come to the aquatic park, but that could be a separate, you know, you buy a season pass to get you in that, or that can be a pass by itself, it's just go to the beach, so we'll have a beach option for, for folks to come in there. But anyway, that's my conclusion, that's, again, my three ideas, you know, either hold what we got, grow it, or if, if you really want to talk about moving towards the private sector, what I'm looking for, and I think what as far as staff's looking for, is we just want a direction to go, you know, we obviously, there's a lot of people that love the park, there's a lot of people that, you know, think maybe we're not in the water park business, but at the end of the day, we just want a direction to go. So if we're going to be in the water park business, then I want to make sure it's the best water park for our citizens, and I just want to know how to get it there, you know, with your all's blessings, so.